This is the Wednesday, December 8th, meeting of the Berlin zoning board of appeals. As an attendee, your name, your sign on login, your telephone number, or your image may be recorded. I'll open the first item on our agenda, which is a continuation of a public hearing for site plan approval at 275 Central Street. I understand the petitioners in the audience, would he like to speak to us?
I will promote him.
While you're doing that, I'll just introduce the board. We'll go around starting with Jim.
Jim Royer.
Lynn Ryan.
Pat Jackson.
Ella Spatler.
Excellent, and Leanne Leahy, who is our land use board's clerk.
And Mr. Yuradi is now in attendance.
Okay. Mr. Yuradi, do you wish to make a presentation to us this evening?
Yes, how you doing? Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you fine. Do you want us to see you or not?
No, sorry. I just prefer to do the voice. It's probably easier for me. I don't have a great setup for video.
Okay.
So, excuse me, so I have a more detailed plan that we got a full blown site plan done. If everyone has that available, I'll address a couple of things that we spoke about last meeting. So one, as far as the front entrance goes, there was a question on where it crosses over, and if it was on the neighbor's property. As you can see on the new site plan, it crosses over on the state highway. And we also are proposing to increase the width of the entire driveway to 18 feet in order to allow for two-way traffic. And also, we have concept approval from Mass DOT to widen the face of the driveway, so that could make it right turning coming out of the driveway would be a lot more, a lot easier, a lot safer. We did look into the driveway in the back going to Taylor Road. I know that was one of the major things. I just personally, I just don't see it as a viable option based on how high the bank goes to get to Taylor Road in such a short span, goes up about 15, 20 feet in just a short time. So there would be a lot of fill required to bring that down to an elevation and then go 275 feet to connect to the current driveway. So they'd like to propose a more safer route out the front and be able to widen the driveway too.
I have a comment on the driveway. That little finger that goes out to the side is on your neighbor's property. The state has an easement there. And per the Berlin driveway permit, once you start playing around with your driveway, move it, be doing it, you have to conform to the driveway permit. Supposedly, which is 20 feet flat from where it meets the road.
It's gonna be tough. It's gonna be tough to do, I think, to do 20 feet flat. I'd have to be out there again to measure that.
Is this a town code, Denny?
Yes, it is. Let me see, but quickly find mine.
Well, you'd also have to have, if you're gonna widen it or anything, you'd have to have a curb cut from the selectman, right? Even though it is state?
Yes. Driveway permit application, the driveway shall not cause water to flow onto the town highway. The driveway shall not restrict the flow of water along the side ditches of the town highway. There shall be safe sight distance for the car to enter the town highway. Driveway access to any approved building lot must originate from any partage of that lot on a town road. Driveway must be kept level for 20 feet minimum from the road. It must be graded for ambulance and fire trucks. Location of driveway to be staked prior to application. Final inspection will be required before sign off on certificate of occupancy fee. The Tumis concrete driveways will be butted to the edge of the road pavement. Lapping onto the road will not be permitted. One inspection will be performed at no cost. There will be a $100 reinspection fee for each additional visit payable to the town of Berlin at time of inspection. All driveways here and after constructed reconstruction are altered. The town of Berlin shall conform to this permit. Any damage done to the town road, which is caused by a contractor unloading, loading track driven equipment on the public way will be the responsibility of the person taking out the permit. Repairs will be accomplished using the infrared method.
I take it you were not aware of this, Mr. Yuradi?
I spoke, when we met out there, I spoke with, there was a representative from the highway department when I met with Richard Hanks and a representative from the fire department as well. We talked about the 20 feet, but he said in certain cases there were exceptions. So I'm not really, maybe it's something I have to go over with them again to see if it's even possible. If it is possible, absolutely want to do it. My fear is that the more, the longer I go flat, the more steep a pitch it's gonna be after that to get into the driveway. Maybe it's something I have to go over with them.
Could I just ask you too, Mr. Yuradi? There's an easement by the state. If they were to widen that road, they could take land up, what is it, like 20 feet from the road that is the state taking?
This one here, you're going by his scale, is just 20 feet, because it's about an inch from the edge of the pavement to his property line is not quite 20 feet, it's probably 18 feet.
So I guess one of the things I'd like to know, if we perchance need to meet again, Mr. Yuradi, is what the height at your lot line is of that driveway?
Okay.
In other words, if the state were to take or use all or part of that property that they have a right to, what would that do to your drive? You know, what would be the height of the drive at your lot line?
Okay.
In our correspondence, when you had some questions, one thing came up to me, and I appreciate you making sure I'm writing things to the right folks. Your email is homevestors.com, right?
Yeah, mike.yuradi@homevestors.com.
Could you, now, Homevestors is a corporation that we might know as webuyuglyhouses.com, right?
Yeah, so Homevestors is a franchise, and I am an individual owner of a franchise with the territory of Worcester County.
So could you explain to me the relationship between and among you as an individual, you, your Turning Point LLC and Homevestors?
Yeah, so Homevestors is the company, it was like, if I was to own a Dunkin' Donuts, I would have an individual company name under that, operating as Dunkin' Donuts. So it's just, it's a franchise, so I am Homevestors, but my actual LLC name is Turning Point Investments.
What is the, what's the relationship, though? Do you, is it just a fee you pay to them and they don't have any authority over Turning Point LLC, or what's the relationship?
Yeah, well, yeah, so we pay fees on houses we buy, houses we sell. They have certain they have certain expectations on how you run your business. They teach, they provide ongoing training. Yeah, I mean.
Okay, there's certain fees. Well, explain to me how the fee system works. Is it just for the education and so forth? Or do they find these properties for you to buy, or how does that work?
They help us with advertising. There's a whole marketing wing that we just, we just decide how much money we want to spend a month, and they go out and they place the ads, they place Google Ads, billboards, mailers, they do everything.
So is Turning Point LLC totally independent of them?
Yeah, I mean, I guess technically.
I'm looking to see, is this something like you, you pay a fee to belong to this club?
Yeah, yeah, so I could operate Turning Point Investments without being Homevestors.
The property in question, is it in the name of Turning Point? Is it in your name, or does Homevestors have an interest in it?
No, they have no interest. It's in my name.
As opposed to Turning Point?
No, it's Turning Point Investments is the owner of the property.
All right, and that's what's on the deed?
Yes, yeah, sorry, I didn't, I didn't understand where you were going with it. Yeah, so Homevestors never owns any piece of anything we do. It's just, we're able to use the national name in order to help us provide credibility when we're seeing homeowners. And like, they do a lot of backend stuff for us as well.
Okay, all right. I would just like to mention during the meeting this evening that Mr. Yuradi was kind enough to invite any member of the board that wanted to go out and walk the property to go out there last Saturday. Pat Jackson, myself, and Ginny Zakatinsky did go out and walk the property. We understand the rules of a viewing, and that is that we can't engage other than having Mr. Yuradi point out features such as where the lot line is, so forth and so on. We can't discuss any of the goings on other than that. But that did take place last Saturday. I think we were there for what, all of 10 minutes, Mr. Yuradi?
Yeah, it wasn't too long. I just wanted to go over the couple options for, in the front of the property, with the entrance exit, and the same with the back.
Yeah, according to that, when you showed us the entrance and exit and whatnot. And if it is state property, again, we have no statements from the state that you're able to do any of this work. And what about the fire department or the safety officer? I don't mean to, I went up that driveway and said, oh my God. And one of your construction crews came out the other day when I was on my way to Hudson, and they literally stopped three lanes of traffic. He just pulled down, shut off the two forward lanes, and shut off the third to turn. This seems like problematic, to say the least, with that cars coming in and out of there at traffic times. Also, how, you would know this, Jenny, don't they line up the plows there to do 495 and everything else?
Yes, and most of the time they get backed on Taylor Road, and they all come out at the same whack.
And go.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I'm thinking, how are you ever even gonna get the driveway plowed for people coming in and out? I just, have you got anything from the police department or the safety officers about what your plans are here, and widening the driveway and making it two-lane traffic?
So, yeah, so we have approval from Mass DOT, concept approval to widen.
All right, do you have that paperwork? Because so far, the only thing I've got from you is that plan. We always would like backup paperwork to verify that this is so, that you do have permission.
Yes, I can send that over to you.
What about our fire department and our, and our safety enforcement?
So I met with a representative from the fire department over there. I didn't hear back from them after that. The police department, I reached out to them as well. And they said they were just waiting to see the updated site plan. So I haven't heard from them back either.
All right, so you have nothing back from them, okay.
No, no, there was someone from the Berlin Highway Department there with Richard Hanks as well. And we just talked about widening it, and he made a suggestion to contact Mass DOT at that point, which I did. And as far as.
Okay, did you talk to the conservation commission at all?
As far as the driveway goes?
No, just on the lot, and everything's agreeable to them. It's kind of just a usual check-in. So you actually really haven't talked to too many other town officials other than the ones that haven't got back to you, right?
I guess, so besides conservation, I have a letter from them saying that they don't have any jurisdiction over what I'm doing as far as the as far as the septic goes.
Okay, that would be Board of Health and the septic, okay. Just two, if you can include some of these correspondence, it would be nice to see what anybody else is saying. And have you checked, again, because we don't have a lot of information here, and it's opinions on how this driveway is gonna work? Why would Taylor Road be a problem?
I can't afford to get there, and the the quickness of the height elevation, within 20 feet, it goes up about 20 feet. The amount of fill to bring in to do that, I just, if there's a way to make the front work, I'd really like to, you know, obviously.
Well, what if the front doesn't work? Would you be able to do it in the back?
No, I would, I would have to sell it as a single family. Just wouldn't, I just can't.
How far is that extended driveway gonna be from the shrubs? You use the front of the house, which is probably out to the side of the house, as the front of the house. And if you actually wind that driveway 18 feet, you are literally in bushes of the house, right? What is that, like a foot from the house?
I don't know the exact measurement. It's probably five feet. I mean, I could put concrete posts there if that's necessary.
Mr. Yuradi, when we did our tour on Saturday, I happened to notice that someone is exiting and entering from Taylor Road because a piece of the stone fence was taken down, and you could see where people have been going in and out down there. Do you know what that's been used for?
I talked with the old homeowner's daughter about that, and she said that her dad used that a long time ago. But that's actually where that break in the stone wall is. If you looked on the site plan, that's not my property. It's Berlin Properties Realty Trust. And the break in the stone wall is, it's showed on the plan, actually.
So your lot line is before that. But they were using it as an entrance and egress, right?
I have very limited knowledge of that. There was a gate there. I don't know what they did, or I think, like I said, I think her dad would use it occasionally, but I don't know to what extent, or I mean, yeah, it would be a lot easier if I did own that piece.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I wondered too about the other small piece that's, that's like between you and where the station has, I mean, it's just a piece of pie right there. Nothing that anybody could ever do anything with.
Yeah, I contacted them actually about that too, and they didn't.
Did you ever, as we suggested, go to the planning board and ask them anything?
About, about the back, going out the back?
Well, about, about what you're doing in general.
No.
Okay, I'd just like to share with you, and it's my negligence. It came to me back just before Thanksgiving from the planning board. And they want to make a couple of insights. Number one, if the use of the property as a residence has not continued for two consecutive years, then it should not be allowed in the event the petitioner attempts to revert to the original use. So if you want to use it as a residence for some reason, you're gonna need to prove that it's been continuously used as a residence for the preceding two years, is what that means. Depending on the type of business office, the use may be allowed in a limited business district, and I think we've decided that your use is proper in that area, or at least that's my feeling that the rest of the folks he'll feel. The third point, during the site plan review, perhaps the proponent can change the access to the property to Taylor Road instead of Central Street to avoid any additional entry and exit from the property so close to the on-ramp of the highway. This may become important if the business grows and additional car traffic increases to this location. So I just share that with my colleagues. Those were the comments from the planning board. I think it's important that, you know, you, like we suggested before, you know, if you go and talk to them, sometimes it makes a difference, if you know what I mean.
Yeah, I'd love to talk with them.
Lynn, this is something you might answer too. According to his square footage, does a handicap space count as one of the five spaces allowed, or is that additional?
It appears to me that the handicap is in addition to the five spaces.
On his site plan it is, but I couldn't find it anywhere that I was reading that that's.
Okay, let me just take a peek here. And are you questioning whether or not the handicap can't count as one of the spaces?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Count as one, because if it counts as one, he's got six, which pushes him over the square footage area.
Well, not only that, but if you read, let's see, where did I find this? Actually, none of the parking spots should be closer to the street than the front of the building.
Right, and then, well, the other ones are around the corner. The two are by the garage.
Right, now, I can't imagine that anyone would have difficulty with a handicap spot being in front of the building or where it's located.
Yeah, in front of the garage.
But, but the other spot known as space one may be an issue, not much of an issue, okay? It's, I mean, it's not like it's 30 feet beyond the house.
Right.
But if there's five or more spots, you have to have, they have to be in back of the line of the frontmost part of the house. In other words, to the side of the back of the house. Although, like I say, as far as a handicap spot goes, I can't see how anyone could complain about that. Do you have certification as yet, Mr. Yuradi, from the Board of Health? That's one of the requirements
Yeah.
that they have approved your system.
Not yet. They have 45 days to get back to us, and I think we're at 38. So we should be hearing from them soon.
Okay, so you've presented all the plans and everything, and you're just waiting for their approval of yours system?
Yep, correct.
This is just for my curiosity. I see a pump there. Is there a reason for the pump?
Just the distance, the well is unfortunately in a tough location, or it's kind of in the middle. And the lead field, I think it's 100 feet from the well. So the, so which would require a pump to go that far.
Okay, are there any requirements on the pump, such as an alarm system or anything?
Yeah, I think it's standard to have an alarm system in the basement. So you know if there's an issue with it.
As someone who's dealing with a grinder pump down the Cape, I can appreciate that. Okay. Do we have any overall general comments for Mr. Yuradi? Can we give him some idea as to where we're leaning?
You go first, Jenny.
My concern is the driveway. And I wonder if they can't bring it around behind the house, excuse me, and come down to the side of the house and come right down on his property and make his life and everybody's life better. It would make a better egress and entrance to that property from now until whenever.
I totally agree with Denny. I think the whole thing with the entrance and access, the wide double past state property onto 495 and the traffic we get. I understand it may be a fiscal handicap, but again, that's part of doing, you know, business. The back road makes much more sense. And again, if this gets resold or whatever, and you have access, you don't know how many cars are gonna be going in and out of here. And I'm sorry, I totally think the driveway should be in the back.
Ginny, do you have any comments?
I absolutely agree with Denny and Pat. For the safety, public safety of everyone, that the egress should be on Taylor Road. I also drove by there this evening, and it's very, very dark at the entrance to the existing driveway at this time. I see there's a proposed sign with a light, but I don't know if there's been any thought about lighting the end of that driveway if it were to be used.
Yeah, we can, we can definitely put lights, as many lights as needed. We haven't done the electrical work over there, so, yeah, it's definitely, it's definitely dark over there at the moment.
Just for yourself, Mr. Yuradi, any lighting that you're gonna put on the property needs to be on that site plan.
And the hours and the size, yes.
Yeah, and the looms and all of that stuff. Yeah, and the looms and all of that stuff. Jim, did you have any comments?
Um. I guess I'm not as concerned about the driveway as everybody else is. Um from my viewpoint, if the state and the highway department and the police department and the fire department, if 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 all those folks are fine with it, then I'm fine with it, but. Um. They said there there are some things that appear to be missing off of this drawings, if there's going to be lighting that needs to be on there, there's going to be a sign for this business. There's nothing discussing any of that thus far. Um so those items would need to be covered as well, but.
The sign, the actually, the sign is on the new plan. It's right on the building, yeah. And again, if we had documentation from some of these other departments, that would help. But right now, we have no idea of what they're either feeling or thinking about this.
So when you say other departments, I just want to make sure I'm clear um.
Hi, if you have to, well, you, the highway department needs to come through a letter from the state, at least I feel that will be required. And the fact that um. The police safety, they feel it's accessible. We still haven't heard from any of these groups. A fire truck has to get up there and down there, no snowplow across it. What would the actual cost be of doing a driveway in the back?
It would be over a hundred thousand dollars to do that. I I I just had one done. Um it was thirty feet of new driveway and it cost me twelve grand. Uh did the, did the math and that. With all the fill that needs to be bringing it run into, it's it's probably going to be more.
Mm-hmm.
Well, I don't understand, Mr. Yuradi. Are you saying you need to make it level or something, or? I mean.
Yeah, I mean.
The road going in there doesn't need to be level, does it?
No, it would just need a gradual decline. Um it it go, Taylor Road is twenty feet higher than. Than uh the land is.
Well, Route sixty-two is twenty feet lower than the driveway too, but I mean.
I think what he's saying is basically off of Taylor Road, you've got an ink line like this.
So you have to. What I saw, did you, did anyone else see that?
No, I did not.
It is quite a fill. From that corner.
I mean.
And right now, there's a lot of free fill coming. In from Marlboro and wherever. Which. Maybe if you've got the right contractor in there to help you, you could get some of the free fill and just. Make a nice driveway.
Yeah, especially where the conservation has no problem with them. If he has a letter from conservation saying they're not involved, then he wouldn't have to worry, right?
I would think not, and it'd be nice if he was trying to pursue that little by piece. Which would make it even. Nicer for him, because that's almost flat right where he's coming.
Yeah.
Coming across from. That little pipe please, he's at the old fence hole.
Okay, well, let's, in all fairness to Mr. Yuradi, outline where we are. Um right now, I have a consensus of the committee. That with the lack of other information coming into us, the majority seems to favor changing the access and egress. Um. On the plan you have. There is no mention of, it says lighting, but it doesn't say. At what height or what looms or anything else. Um particularly for the sign that's going to be illuminated, because we don't allow too many illuminated signs. Um, you need to take a look at the parking spots. And again, I, and I'm speaking for myself, I don't know that I'm speaking for the board. I don't think anyone could fault you with wanting a handicap spot close by. But please make sure that that number one meets the requirements in the uh parking area. Of the bylaw. Um, I think there are requirements. That we have something from the Board of Health that they've approved your system. I think um we need something in writing from conservation saying they're not involved, and if you have such a letter. All you need to do is send it to Leanne. Um. Again, police, fire, highway. Have not seen this plan as yet, I don't think, have they?
We just got it yesterday.
But I'm asking, Mr. Yuradi, you haven't shown this plan to. Um any other entity, have you?
Uh were were they part of the copies that I gave you guys, or do I have to use an additional one?
Well, how many copies did you leave?
Eight.
Well, there's, that's sufficient for the zoning board of appeals, but that's not enough to give to anybody else. There's seven members plus one for the office.
Okay, how many copies would I need? To generate and where would I have to leave them to make sure everyone gets one?
Well, I would suggest a couple of things. Number one, there's a list of who's supposed to get copies of the plans. Um. The town clerk could probably give you guidance there, but I would say at a minimum, planning board, conservation commission. Um, building inspector, uh Board of Health. Um. Can anyone help me with someone I'm missing?
Well, police, fire, highway.
Yeah, because they're.
I get seven additional.
Okay.
Conservation, planning, Board of Health, police, fire, highway, and building inspector. Am I missing anybody?
Okay, so we've take, we've taken a look at that. We also um mentioned that we need. Um. Communication from other boards. You're working on the Board of Health, okay, that's one of them. You say you have a letter from conservation, that's fine, all you need to do is give that to Leanne. It says they're not involved. We need something from the planning board. We need some, and I would suggest that, you know, they're meeting. I think they're meeting what, like the twel- fourteenth or something of this month?
They, yes, they are meeting next Tuesday, the fourteenth.
Okay, so if you would want to get on their agenda, you would need to contact the chair um quickly. Um but I would suggest that you meet with them. Um. We need something from highway, we need something from. Emergency services, the um uh EMT and fire department, the police department.
Also the state, if he was in communication with the state.
Yes, he said he has something.
I can interrupt for a minute. Um Fire Prevention did send an email on Thursday, November eighteenth. After their site visit with um highway and the building inspector. And um I believed I forwarded it to the entire board. Um but anyway, so the the fire prevention already did respond after doing a site visit. And the building commissioner was in, was in agreement with what the fire inspector wrote.
Okay, so what did the fire inspector, could you read it to us, Leanne?
Sure. Um, good morning, all. I just wanted to give everyone an update on the site plan approval request at two seventy-five Central Street. For Mr. Yuradi. We were able to do a site visit on November seventeenth with him and the building inspector. And Jim Spinney from Highway and myself, Marshall Litchwell. I spoke with police chief, who could not make the visit, but we knew his concerns and will keep him in the loop. We looked at both the front and rear of the current property that Mr. Yuradi owns. In the rear of the property location to come out on Taylor Road, there is a twenty-foot high-grade difference with a hill. We also looked at the current driveway, which brings up other challenges. It was suggested that he give his engineer to come up with a plan for all parties to review. The other issue is that whatever plan he comes up with will also have to be approved by Mass DOT. Because that section of road is state highway. Mr. Yuradi said he will keep us all informed about submitting a new plan. Or if other auctions open up with the abutters property, and that's signed by um Marshall Litchwell.
What year was that, Leanne?
That was um November eighteenth, so the day after their, their site visit.
Yep.
Okay, but, all right, so Mr. Yuradi, you heard that, correct?
Yes.
And that's not definitive. In other words, they, they're looking for another plan. Is that correct?
Yeah, yes.
So you need to speak to them again, Mr. Litchfield, right? It's Litchfield, isn't it?
It's Litchwell.
Litchwell, I keep wanting to call him Litchfield. So you're going to contact um the police department and the fire department, correct?
Yes, in the highway department. Uh I'm sorry, I thought, I thought the, some of the copies were going to them. Um but I can def, I'll definitely go over this with them.
Okay. And. I know that it's an imposition sometimes for them to. Um attend our meetings or whatever, but might I, might I suggest to you that? Um. You get something in writing from them? Because I don't think you want to. To be perfectly honest with you, you know, I would think that. Using um Taylor Road as access and egress would greatly enhance the value of that property. I mean, you're in the business, don't you agree?
Um I I definitely don't disagree that it's a safer option, if if doable. Um. I just, it's just, it's a long way and, you know, and a lot, it's really high to go with that driveway.
Well, I just want you to keep in mind that for us. Um, once we approve office space, like we've said in the past, it could be for any kind of office. It could be a realtor's office, there could be people in and out of there every day. The state could, what would you do if the state decided to widen Route sixty-two, which is not unforeseen?
Mm-hmm.
You know, that would throw you kind, the house across the street is so close to the road that I don't think they could take any land over there. I think they'd have to take it from this side. And like again, one of the questions I have of you is at the lot line. What the, what the height off of the highway is. Because if you had to modify that in the future, I don't know that you could.
Yeah, I'll find out what the height of that is.
Okay, does anybody have any further questions?
Have suggestion.
Yeah.
That, that little pie, maybe you can get a. Weight of passage over it and come in through the old byway.
Yeah, I don't know what good it would be to anybody else.
Can't build nothing there.
Right. And I suggest, you know, some suggestions have been made about felon stuff. I'm sure you could investigate that too. Do you have a feel for where we're coming from, Mr. Yuradi?
Uh yes, yes, like. I do.
What's your feeling?
Um yeah, obviously, I I don't disagree with you that uh um going out the back to Taylor Road, um if doable is the best option. I just uh. I I wouldn't be able to afford it, I just don't have that kind of money, so um. If there's a way to to make it work upfront, um gonna hopefully try and do that, and if not, um. Then it doesn't, it doesn't look like this will be an option.
Well, I think one of the things you need to investigate is the most, we're not looking for. You know, something dramatic, we're looking for something you can traverse. All right.
Yeah.
I would normally ask you if you want to extend the hearing, I don't think, I think um probably the board wants to. And with the expectation that at our next meeting, you would have the answers to all of the questions that have been raised this evening. Um at which time, if you don't and you need an extension, well, then that would be, you know, extension you request. How does the rest of the board feel? Do they think that's fair?
Yes.
Yes.
There.
Is there any question in your mind what we're looking for you to do for next month, Mr. Yuradi?
Nope, I think I'm clear.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to continue the hearing until our next meeting.
I'll make a motion.
In January, to allow the petitioner to um supply materials to the board.
If I may, I'd like to make a motion that we continue this hearing until January twelfth at seven P M.
Okay.
Oh, God love you, Jim. Okay, Jim's made a motion and Denny seconded, I'll take a roll call vote. Jim?
Aye.
Denny?
Aye.
Pat?
Aye.
Jenny?
Aye.
And I'm an I. So can I um take it that we'll see you next month, Mr. Yuradi?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, do we have any other business before the board this evening?
Um approving minutes from last month, minutes of November eleventh.
Would someone care to make a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes from last month, November eleventh's meeting.
Seconded.
Okay, there's a motion made and seconded to approve the minutes. I'll do a roll call vote, Jim.
Aye.
Denny?
Aye.
Pat?
Aye.
Uh Jenny Zakatinsky?
Aye.
And I'm an I, so it's a unanimous vote. Uh we don't have any bills and payroll?
No, but I do have two. They want the. Budget sent in, and I'm going to recommend that we level fund it from last year, five hundred dollars. And so right now, we've only spent seven dollars and seventy cents.
Well, what we spend the bulk of the money for usually is when um central planning has their classes. And that's like seventy-five dollars a person. Now, I don't know if they'll be in person this year or whatever. Um but um. That's what we usually spend the bulk of the money for, and if five people go, you know, you can eat up a chunk of change. With transportation and so forth. So Jenny, would you like to make a motion that we level fund our budget, expense budget for F Y twenty-two?
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three, I'm sorry.
Yes, I I request that we approve five hundred dollars for the budget for fiscal year twenty-three.
I'll second.
Okay, Jenny second. I'll do a roll call vote. Jim?
Aye.
Uh Denny?
Aye.
Pat?
Aye.
Jenny?
Aye.
And I'm an I, it's a unanimous vote. So you'll take care of that, Denny?
Yes.
If you haven't already.
No, I, I just picked it up tonight and I haven't had much luck getting a response from any of the other people.
Did you hear anything about the five grand?
No, that's why I say I haven't. Whoever I've contacted, they don't want it. I don't know if I should be sending a letter to them and say, you should get back to us to get this off our books, or we'll put it back in the general fund.
Either that or we can send it into, what is that?
Find mass money?
Yeah, find mass money. Let them deal with it.
Yeah.
Okay, do we have anything else? Leanne, that you're aware of?
Not that I am aware of.
We need, well, we need to schedule next month's meeting.
January twelfth, yes. Yeah, it would be January twelfth.
And we're just, is there anyone that's here that can't attend then? Okay. Leanne, could I trouble you to send a note to Keith and Susannah and ask them to watch the video of this, of this meeting, so that in the event later on, we, we need to use one of them that we, we will be able to, okay?
Okeydoke.
And just have them just make a note of what date they do that and let you know what date they watch it or something, so that when they need to if, if and when they need to fill out paperwork later on, they, you know, they'll have the information.
Okay.
Okay, so we've set the next meeting for January twelfth at seven PM, and as far as I can see, everybody is planning on being here. Have you heard anything, Leanne, about the virtual versus the non-virtual?
No, the only thing I know is that the governor extended virtual meetings to, I believe, May of twenty-twenty-two. And just today, the town administrator sent out an update stating that in-person meetings are allowed, however, masks must be worn by everyone and six feet apart.
So how do you folks, how do you folks feel about in-person versus virtual? Jim, do you have any thoughts?
I don't see how we're going to do an in-person realistically. I, I, I'm fine with doing a virtual. But I, I just don't see the logistics of a, an in-person at this point.
I agree with it.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, Pat, I'm sorry.
No, I agree with them. I just assume stick with the Zoom.
Denny?
I would not be in favor of that at all. Just because of proper starting around again.
Oh, isn't it awful? Ginny, how do you feel?
I'm fine with Zoom, as long as I can get on.
Oh, yeah.
A little problem this evening.
Ginny, I'll, I'll open up at five thirty and you can start at five thirty together.
Okay, it only took a half hour, Leanne.
Ginny, you, Ginny, you seem to have good internet access. I mean, I don't see you, you know, any burping or anything. Is it just the getting into the link or something, or?
Yeah, it, it would not let me in. And it then said that Safari, which is the program I'm on, was not supporting Zoom.
Ah.
I then went on to Google and had to almost start all over again to sign on to a Google account. So I danced around for a while, but I finally persevered and got in.
We thank you for your efforts.
Thank you. Thanking me.
Well, no, I, I feel, I feel badly if you know, the petitioner, at least if you have five, you know, you can get a couple of nades. But if you only have four, you know, it can, it can lead to problems, so.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, well, I feel terrible. I'll start earlier next time.
Ginny, I do open up the, the room at quarter off, so that gives an extra, you know, fifteen minutes on the front end for people to try to get connected and, and.
Unforeseen problems.
Exactly.
Okay, I will.
And I will try to remember to include the link when I send out the reminder email. But if and when I do forget, if you go to my town government, which lists all the, the, all the board's meetings, the, the link is always posted there in the agenda. It's required by open meeting law.
Oh. All right.
You could, you could always find it there if I forget to send it directly in my email reminder, which I've been forgetting to do, and I apologize.
Well, my goodness, we'll have to take you to the woodshed, Leanne.
And I'll be in after you.
Am I getting fired?
Oh, I don't think that'd ever happen, Leanne. Anyone have anything else that they'd like to discuss or that they're aware of that's going on that may affect us?
Not that I know of.
Okay.
The, the, Lynn, excuse me, the, the deadline for January's meeting is next Wednesday, the fifteenth. So I will let the board know if an application should come in but by, by Wednesday evening. I'm not anticipating anything, but you never know.
I am so surprised because we were so bogged down before COVID. And I figured once, you know, we started meeting again, we'd be bombarded, but that's not the case.
No, it's been very quiet.
Okay, if, if no one else has anything, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and second motion by Jim and second by Ginny. Roll call vote, Jim?
Aye.
Denny?
Aye.
Pat?
Aye.
Ginny?
Aye.
Okay, we're adjourned, folks.